City of Salem, Massachusetts. The City Council Committee on Administration and Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in the council chamber on Monday, May 13th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of discussing the matters listed below, which are the fiscal year 2025 operating budgets and capital improvement plans for the following departments: the mayor, the legal department, human resources, IT, the library, and also capital improvement plans. Notice of this meeting was posted on May 10th, 2024, at 1:41 p.m. This meeting is being recorded. Present from the A&amp;F Committee are councilors Jerzlow, councillor Proznuski, councillor Stott, and councillor Varela. Also attending from the Committee of the Whole is councillor Hapworth, and councillor Musillo, and councillors Cohen. And also in attendance tonight, joining us, we have Beth Renard, our city solicitor, Lisa Camerata, our HR director, Roberta Gansenberg, our IT manager, and Tara Mansfield, from the Salem Library. And welcome, everyone. This being our first budget hearing, I mentioned, as I did at our city council meeting, that we will be meeting over the next four weeks, as posted on the city calendar. And these public meetings are for financial review of best practice, and to learn about the departments and how they utilize funds. To view the full budget, please go to salemma.gov/fy25, and you'll find all 702 pages of it. Even though we know who you all are, please state your name when you come up to talk, and please tell us about what your department does, anything you'd like to highlight, any significant changes in your budget, and then we will go over the numbers. To start, we are going, the mayor is going to go at the end of the meeting, so we are going to start with the legal department, which is Section 10 of the book. Thank you, and we have our city solicitor, Beth Renard, and to start us off.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Beth Renard, I'm the city solicitor. The legal department consists of several divisions. We have the legal division, which is myself, our assistant city solicitor, James Wellock, and our paralegal Joanne Rumi. It also consists of the licensing board, which is staffed by a clerk, Melissa Mojico. And we also have the DEI department, which the DEI director, as many of you already know, is Rahina Zaragoza. The budget this year has a few changes in it. Previously, we did have myself as the solicitor, we had a .8 attorney in Vicki Caldwell, and then we had a .4 Sharon, who worked out of the police department. Right now, we have two full-time staff, myself and James, along with Joanne. In addition to that, this year, we have hearing officer. The council recently approved or adopted Chapter 40U, the general laws, which will allow us to have a hearing officer, who will give folks who get tickets from the building department or health department, right to appeal those tickets. This provision of law also allows us to lean properties that do not pay their tickets previously under the 21D tickets. There was no mechanism for us to get those unpaid tickets, so this will enable us to do that. So we have a part-time hearing officer in the budget. In addition to that, we have a part-time enforcement officer. This will be for the licensing board, for managing tour companies, and street performers, primarily. In addition to that, we have a few increases in stipends. Joanne Rumi, who is the public workers officer, there is a $250 increase in her stipend. And the clerk of the race equity commission, there's an increase in the number and the hours for the minutes, going from $1,200 to $1,800. So we have that budget. In addition to that, my department manages the Comcast contract, so there is a PEG budget that we also administer. And that is really just when the franchise agreement is approved, there is a small amount that goes onto the bill, comes back through the city to SATV for their operations. You'll see that budget, it's primarily an in-and-out budget, that comes from the Comcast subscribers, to the city, then to the SATV.
Thank you, and we will be voting on the PEG funds separately from the department budget. Do any of the councilors have any questions? Councillor Musillo?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Renard, can you talk about the two new positions for the 40U? Do you think that that's going to remain the same, about 120 hours per year, moving forward? Or do you think that's just, it's going to ramp up?
So, we're not, we don't really know what the level of appeal is going to be right now, so that's how we budgeted it for this year. I'm not sure what the volume of the appeals will be. We've never done this before, so it's hard to say.
And even the enforcement officer?
This is a new position as well. So right now, we have Sergeant Ball, we have Melissa, and we have Jeremy, and this person will assist them during the busy, during the summer and the fall.
Oh, so it's in addition to everyone who already does it?
Yes, it's part of their job, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Not being a member of the committee, through you to our solicitor. I have a couple of things. First of all, thank you for your good work on the wage-staff ordinance. One of the things that we talked about with the mayor was that if we did get a lot of people reporting, that we would potentially need someone part-time to help. Even though we've had a decent amount of people reporting, it doesn't seem like it's creating a lot more stress. Could you talk about that?
So, we've had a few individuals come in or call. We've walked them through the process. It hasn't taken more than, for each one, a few hours of my time, so it hasn't been a burden so far.
Any other questions? Councillor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Just to follow up on the new part-time enforcement officer, I'm also thinking on next week's meeting. You said summer and fall. Is this expected to be a seasonal position, or year-round that chairs?
It's only funded for $70,000, $7,500, so it's expected to be a seasonal position, yes.
So not part-time, year-round, but seasonal?
Seasonal.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Musillo?
Thank you, Chair. What do you think the likelihood is of hiring those two positions for that small amount? I mean, who do you think would be applying for it?
So, for the 40U position, that would be evenings, so it could be someone that is looking for, supplement their income, you know, work in the evening, do some Zoom or in-person hearings. Same thing for the part-time enforcement person, it might be, I'm expecting we're going to need people for the weekends, like Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, maybe someone who might want to supplement their income, weekend work.
Any other questions from the council? No? Okay, the budget summary that we'll be voting on for the legal department is on page 400. Oh, sorry, councillor. Oh, councillor Stott?
Thank you, I wasn't sure if there were any questions on the expenditures, but are we just voting on personnel first? I'd like to make a motion to approve the Solicitor and Licensing Board personnel budget of $512,110.
Yes, I was thinking we'd ask all our questions for the department, and then do the format we did last year of voting for the personnel expenditures and then the total.
Okay. And for the total expenditures for the Solicitor and Licensing Board, $593,210.
Thank you. So councillor Stott makes moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget in the amount of $512,110, and the expenditures budget in the amount of $81,100, for a total, for a department total of $593,210.
Oh, I said that incorrectly, sorry. Yeah, okay.
Second. Congrat. All in favor? Okay, I see four hands, including my own, so that passes 5 to 0. Thank you. And next, two pages over, we have the PEG Access Enterprise Funds for this department. Are there any questions on those, from the council? So it's two pages up, there's not a page number on it, we have about 405. Councillor Stott?
Did we, thank you, Chair Merkel, did we receive an explanation on the PEG Access Enterprise Fund?
I believe, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, the city solicitor had discussed it. But if you have a further question, or would like another explanation?
I don't, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Solicitor and Licensing Board PEG Access expenditures of $691,250.
Yes, so councillor Stott moves to recommend approval of the PEG Access Enterprise Funds expenditures for $691,250, which brings the total as the same, $691,250. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Councillor Proznuski, all those in favors? Okay, so I see four hands, plus my own. Thank you very much. Next, we have Human Resources, which is Section 11. And, yes, and we'll be voting on four different sections here. We have the General Administration, Budget Summary, Workman's Comp, Unemployment, and the GIP, the Group Insurance Budget. So we will start with an overview. Thanks, Ms. Camerata. Whenever you'd like to start, thank you.
I got this, right? So, hi, everybody. Lisa Camerata, I believe I know all of you. It's good to see everybody. It seems like time has flown, right? I feel like I was just here last year talking about Spanish class, which we're still doing, but here we are a year later. So, in my department, there are typically four of us. Right now, there are three. Myself is the HR director and the ADA coordinator, and I also am liaison for, to the Commission on Disabilities. We have an office manager slash assistant, Alyssa Brady, and also Personnel Aide, Amy O'Keefe. Right now, our benefits manager position is vacant. Once the, once we're done with all of our open enrollments, we'll be posting that role, and, you know, hiring someone to take that. So our department, I think I've interacted with many of you on many different reasons and occasions. We, you know, obviously, we post vacant roles, we schedule and conduct interviews, we hire full-time, part-time, temporary, we participate in negotiations, and administer the different collective bargaining agreements, workers' compensation, as I believe, councillor Merkel, you mentioned, called onto my department, as well as unemployment, which is thankfully, or at least I'm going to, if I would, but we're pretty level with that right now. Health insurance, the Group Insurance Commission, we've been with the GIC since 2012. Life insurance, dental insurance, we just offer vision insurance this year, which has become a big hit with a lot of employees. You know, we make sure that people are being paid correctly, all the different personnel action forms, resolving here grievances. There are times I have, you know, a lot of one-on-ones with department heads, just different issues, whether they be regard to city policy, or any employee interactions in the department, and anything that sort of falls under us, I guess. We interact with a lot of the other departments as well. This year, we're actually able to spearhead with the building department. Helped anybody wearing their badges tonight? We all have badges. But we're really excited that we did that, actually. I just wanted to highlight that, because that was something that was just really important security-wise. I mean, as things just change, you know, citywide, statewide, nationwide, security is just really important to people, and now we've got badges, I hear everybody pulling them out now.
Checking for them.
I just wanted to put that out there. And if you don't like the photograph we used, we're certainly hoping to change it for you. But it's just, I think it really just provides a level of comfort for people, and just let people know that, you know, this is how you identify, if you work for the city of Salem, and it opens the doors, and it shows team, it shows that we all belong in the same place. That's just, I'm, issue is really important to a lot of people, and I feel like that.
Thank you. I do appreciate the focus on, on security, yeah, and making people feel safe in their workplace. Any questions? Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, councillor Merkel. Not being a member of the committee, through you to our HR director. Really missing James already, I hope it wasn't because the Bruins lost. Do you think this is sufficient salary to hire a replacement?
I do, actually, I do. I believe it's a little higher than it was last year. We're working on it. Well, I think we'll be able to.
I do want to thank you for all the good work with the Disabilities Commission. I think it's really, councillor Stott and I have alternated as being liaisons, and I think it's really important, the work that's being done, especially with outdoor dining this year. And the only other thing I'd like to say is that some councilors, like myself, don't always want us people to know who we are, or walk around town.
Right, where were you? Just joking with all of you. I do appreciate that you brought up the outdoor dining, because Disabilities Commission is now part of that whole process, which, so far, 16 establishments have come before disabilities, and presenting their plans and photographs, and we're educating. To, you know, obviously accessibility, but right down to the tables, and, you know, the turn space in between the tables, and, you know, umbrella placement, umbrella height, and we have, I believe, 11 more coming in. We're having an early meeting this month, on Wednesday night, for 11 more establishments. And we've been approving them with conditions, we'll work with the building department, and that's where the enforcement piece will come in. But there's definitely, we're not seeing any resistance to it, it's just more of an education piece. So thank you for bringing that up, because I think that the commission is very happy to be sort of on the map now, too.
Councillor Musillo?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question related to that. In one of your 2025 focus items, you talk about the wise use of funds generated from handicap violations. How much are we talking about there, and what have you done with the funds? Or what has the Disabilities Commission done with the funds?
So, over the years, we have purchased, for those that don't know, when there is a ticket issued for someone who parks in a handicap spot, you know, unauthorized, the fee is, I think, this council, or council a few years ago, it's $300. And so that goes to a separate fund that the council approved years ago, for that to go for purchases to assist persons with disabilities, right? So that, that is directly for the commission to work with. Over the years, we have purchased those accessible picnic tables you may see in different parts of the city, that actually have the bench, and there's actually a space in the bench for a wheelchair to go in, as opposed to putting a person that, you know, has a wheelchair, or a walker, or anything like that, sort of at the end of the table. We have purchased assistive listening devices. One is for this building, although I don't know if it's needed anymore, at least for this room, because of the, I think, some of the enhancements that were made here. We have one over at 98 as well. We have purchased the, I believe it's the lift over at, can't think of any of it, over at Forest River, so that that press box concession area is accessible. We've also paid for the maintenance for that. We have donated, I'm sorry? No, Forest River. I lost my train of thought. Donated, I'm sorry, you said you donated, oh, to the Unified Sports at the high school. That's right, two years in a row. In fact, they just sent me an invoice the other day, and, oh, accessible picnic tables over at the Mac Park, where the accessible, the food farm. And we are also purchasing wheelchairs for a rental-type program, purchase, rental purchase, or like loner, that we're working with destination cell to put them over at that new facility over at the South Park Garage.
So, so do you know, on average, how much is collected each year? Or Anna? I'm just curious.
I can get that for you, and I do know that we do use that money to pay the clerk for the, for the board as well. That comes out of that as well.
To pay the clerk for the Disabilities Commission? Okay.
Councillor Proznuski?
Lisa, real quick, just off the top of your head, how many open positions do we have that we're looking to fill right now, that you have to hire for?
Maybe eight, eight or 10, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, we've just posted the Director of IT and Innovation, Administrative Assistant at the Department of Public Services, general foreperson, and maybe four or five others. It's not as hard, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, no, that's okay, I just was going to ask if they're all posted, that's all.
Yeah, everything is posted, and we are getting more candidates, I have to say. I think that that sort of inability to get anybody to apply for a role, I think that we might be past that, I hope I'm not jinxing us, or jinxing the city, but it seems to have turned, and we are getting more applicants, and larger.
Because it appears that other cities and towns around us are paying more, and people are waiting for jobs over there, rather than Salem. I'd just like to hear your comments, maybe you wanted to spell that.
I didn't hear a word of what you said.
Our salary rates, in comparison to other cities and towns around us, the rumor out there is that we're lower, that's why people are going other places, and I think, I think that's, there's some untruth to that, so I just wanted you to, to address that.
I think for some of our positions, that may be true, which is what we're looking at, you know, we've done the salary surveys, and we've looking, we're looking at a comprehensive study of all of our salaries across the board. You know, we do have some, some benefits, though, that we do try to let people know, you know, and I think I mentioned that even in my narrative, you know, we were, I did an onboarding the other day with maybe five or six new employees up, over, up across the street. We went over, you know, all the different things that the city will actually assist with, right? I mean, we have, you know, the, the HRA reimbursement, where we reimburse for in-and-out patient copays, as well as high-tech imaging, which a lot of municipalities don't do. Flexible spending, if you're enrolled in health insurance with us, the city picks up that $60 fee. There are just certain things that we do, that I don't think that other municipalities are doing. So sometimes when our salaries aren't exactly what somebody may be looking for, you know, we have implemented that sign-on bonus, which has helped us, along with the things that we do, that other municipalities don't do, have actually, you know, been surprising to people. And, you know, the Group Insurance Commission is now doing away with that waiting period, I don't know if anyone's aware of that. At one point, there was almost up to a 75 to an 80-day waiting period, so the city would actually, before their health insurance would, would be effective. So if we brought somebody on board who had to pay for Cobra, that was, that's a lot. I mean, Cobra is 102% of the actual premium, for wherever you're, you know, whatever you had. The city actually offered, we would contribute $100 for two months for an individual plan, if somebody needed that, and up to $250 a month for two months, till their insurance kicked in. So there are certain benefits that we have, that sometimes sort of, you know, can kind of help out with, with the salary. But we do know, some of our salaries, I would say for some positions, we're definitely trying to work on that, and try to get people where they need to be, but others, I think we're right where we need to be.
In the seats.
You know, I mean, we have, what, 14 holidays, and, you know, our vacation time, our sick leave, you know, it's, we try to sell that as well.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that explanation, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? No? Okay, so the first, yes, oh, sorry, councillor Varela. Yes, so we're first voting on the budget summary on page 409, if there are no more questions on the General Administration Personnel and Expenditures.
Thank you, councillor Merkel. I'd like to make a motion for a positive recommendation for the Human Resources General Administration Personnel for a total of $1,021,414, as well as the Human Resources General Expenditures for $31,800, for a total department, department total of $1,053,214.
Councillor Varela moves to recommend approval of the Personnel Budget for $1,021,414, expenditures at $31,800, for a total of, a department total of $1,053,214. All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second?
Okay.
Thank you, councillor Proznuski. All those in favor? Great, thank you. I see four hands, plus my own, so it passes 5 to 0. Okay, next we have, which is page 413, is the Workman's Comp Budget Summary. Does anyone have any questions on these expenditures? No? Okay. 413?
415?
413?
No.
413?
Thank you, councillor Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Workers' Comp Expenditures, section of $410,806.
Thank you. Councillor Stott moves to recommend approval of the Workers' Comp Expenditures for a total of $410,806.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Proznuski. All those in favor? Great, I see four hands, plus my own, so that passes 5 to 0. Next, we have on page 415, for this department, the Unemployment Budget Summary. Does anyone have any ques, anyone from the council have any questions on the unemployment No? Councillor Stott?
Thank you, councillor Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Unemployment Compensation Expenditures for a total of $220,000.
Thank you. Councillor Stott moves to recommend approval of the Unemployment Compensation Expenditures for a total of $220,000. Seconded?
Second.
By councillor Proznuski. All those in favor? Okay, I see four hands, plus my own, so it passes 5 to nothing. Okay, so next on page is 418 and 419. We have the budget summary for the Employee Insurance Benefits, Group Benefits. Does anyone have any questions from the council on that? Councillor Stott?
Thank you, councillor Merkel. I did just have one quick, not necessarily a question, but maybe a comment, that this increase is quite large, but also very much outside of our control, correct?
Yes, actually, it is. It's interesting, though, I did speak with another community today, who is not with the GIC, and their rate increase was over 10%, so I think we're still, I think we're in a better, a better place. I've often said this over the years, that this was a hard move back in 2012. I still think it's the best move we ever made. It still gives people a choice. It still gives people a choice and the pool is so big and the GIC, and let's face it, they have leverage, right? They can tell these carriers to sharpen their pencils. We really don't have that ability. The non-Medicare increase, which is like with the active plans, the increase was nine and a half. Medicare plans were four, one, the overall average is eight and a half. So it's close to 10. But it's still under that and there are still affordable options here. I mean, we've seen people changing their plans based on the fact that, you know, some of their rates went up. So there's definitely an option for people to choose and, you know, I still think, as I said, it's the best move we ever made.
That's great. Thank you. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. On that, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the, what is this, it doesn't say the department name, Group Insurance Budget of $18,000, no, $18 million. Hence my comment, $18,605,282.
Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the Employee Insurance Benefit Expenditures for a total of $18,605,282. Second?
If there's anything that Lisa, Lisa knows about the insurance, she's got her sharp pencil always going. I can't profess enough about how on the money she is with, with our insurance and thankful that the city has her, watchtalking everything like she does, so I will gladly second that one.
Seconded by Counselor Prozinski. All in favor? Okay, I see four hands plus my own, since matter carries five to no, five to zero. Okay. So, thank you, and thank you for everything. Thank you for everything. Appreciate it. Next we have the IT department. Welcome, Ms. Gansenberg. So also, I believe, your department, if you would like to speak to any CIP that you have, if any capital projects you'd like to discuss, feel free to include that as well.
Okay, I will.
And thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. So, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Roberta Gansenberg and I go by Bobby. And I'm the Acting Director of the IT Department. I stepped into this role in January and it's been challenging, but I'm very fortunate to have the support of the IT staff as well as many other department staff in the city. To my point, my coworker here, John Ankowitz, is here. I didn't ask him to be here. I just came and he was here and he said, I'm here to support you. So we really have a great staff here and, and I feel very fortunate. Over the past year, there have been significant staffing changes in the IT department. We are a department of 12 and currently have four vacant positions. Counselor Prozinski, I know you asked Lisa Camerat about how many open positions, so even though we have four, we're not advertising for all of them yet and we're kind of trying some other ideas. So I'm going to speak to that. I just wanted to let you know that even though we have four open positions, they're not being all posted yet. I'd like to give a shout out to the current IT staff that we have. Because we are short-staffed, they are extremely knowledgeable and hardworking. They are dedicated and supportive to each other and the other city departments. We are using the current department vacancies as an opportunity to strengthen and restructure the department. For example, the Business System Analyst position vacated in mid-March will be replaced by a GIS Manager position. The vacant CIO position has been posted as Director of IT and Innovation. And the vacant Technical Support position has been outsourced to supplement IT support at the Police Department. Even though we have been short-staffed throughout the year, our departmental accomplishments have been significant. We continue to strengthen our cybersecurity position, implemented multi-factor authentication for our Microsoft products, completed the SharePoint project, brought the Fire Department into the Salem domain and partnered with them to expand access to the Next Gen CAD system, along with many other accomplishments listed in the budget narrative. Projects for the next year include but are not limited to picking up the digitization project after a two-year pause, expanding our web conferencing systems, replacing aging network switches in our data center, schools and other city buildings, and updating the city website. As the IT department works to complete these projects and the other projects listed in the budget narrative, we will continue to facilitate technology throughout the city and provide IT support to all city departments. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on the narrative or, or in the budget numbers.
Thank you. And also, I neglected to say this is section nine of the book. And let's see if we have it in. Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate all the work. Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Bobby. I have a bunch of questions.
Oh, good.
First, the first one is, what is the total cost of the new website upgrade? Because there's numbers everywhere for that.
Yes, so the actual bid or quote we got, I believe, is $74,000. So that includes, typically we pay $12,000 each year for our current website. So the bid or the quote was for $74,000, but included in that bid is the annual cost, which goes up slightly to $16,000. And I think that's why you see in the general fund, I think it's $4,000, the website. And then in the CIP is the 74.
Okay, so what does the yearly amount give us?
16.
Yep, so what do we get for that?
So they host the site, so there's a cost for that. Their support system is terrific. In fact, just today, somebody called in a panic. They had posted something and it ended up in the wrong place on the calendar. We were all busy, I couldn't get in there and, and they were panicked, they needed it to be updated by the end of the day. I emailed our support, civic support, and within a half hour, it was fixed. They had replied and resolved the problem.
So it is civic whatever that, that does this?
Yeah.
So it seems like there's a lot of problems with their calendars, with the calendar functionality lately. Is that a problem with old, an old platform that we're using or, so part of this is upgrading everything?
Yes, so the technical term, the current platform of our site is called Drupal and we're upgrading to Central and it's the ultimate package for Central. So we're getting a much more dynamic site and also the backend is, is much, it's much more functional. I think the problems we're seeing, especially on the calendar, I know there's issues with the search feature. It's because the platform is so old that they, the engineering has sort of slowed down on that.
Yeah.
And they're working to.
That's how they get you to move. Yep, 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 got it. So, all right. So if you were to say in one sentence what the goal of the new website design would be, what is it?
I actually have it right now.
I thought you.
So the, this, let's see, I can skip over that. The new website, website will be accessible and dynamic with improvements on the current features and additional new features. We've formed a website upgrade team that brings a common commitment to a more equitable, user-friendly, dynamic site.
User-friendly for who?
Well, along with the accessibility, so user-friendly for everybody. So we're, we're hoping to improve the language transition, translation, along with people that may have vision disabilities, may be.
I guess, yeah.
DA compliant.
That's perfect. I guess, is it going to be more resident-centric or employee-centric? It feels very employee-centric to me. Like you have to know a whole lot about how this city is, is, you know, divided and what department takes care of what before you can find the info.
Yes, so the search feature should help with that a lot because I think now when we use the search feature, the, it doesn't always bring up the most current information.
Right.
Also, the design of the website should be more user-friendly, so you should be able to find things just by, you know, some better, better mega menus, you know, the, it's always hard to have everything on the homepage, that's really valuable real estate, but the new design of the website should be more user-friendly and easier to find things.
Do you, do you have any data on the chatbot feature, how often that's used?
I don't.
Do you think that one of the goals of the new design would be to not have to use the chatbot feature anymore?
Well, I think some people, it's, maybe it's, it's an alternative way.
Okay.
Finding things.
That's fair, that's fair.
People like to type in, you know, in the find, other people like to kind of, you know, use the chatbot feature.
Okay. That's fair. I was just curious about that. I have some questions on the data. What is a website session as opposed to a hit on the website?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. We just, we got our information through Google Analytics and it's a, it's a fact or it's data that we report every year and this was the first year that I gathered that data, but can find out. It's a good question.
I think Counselor Stott might know, but, just by the look of her face, but the numbers have gone down over time. What, is that just because of the usability problems with the website or?
That's part of it. I also think that they were up during the pandemic. I think there was a lot of, you know, just a lot of people at home and looking and now maybe not as much. So I think it's a combination of, you know, maybe the pandemic's over.
Pandemic data, okay.
But also, you know, maybe people are discouraged with the old website and are looking for something that are.
Okay. And then my final question is your cybersecurity item, which you asked for $102,000 and you're getting $23,000. What are we not getting because of that?
So we're still getting the whole package. That's Arctic Wolf and they are our partner in cybersecurity. They provide managed detection and response. They monitor, monitor our network and outside threats and manage security awareness by engaging our employees and, and teaching them to recognize and, you know, social engineering attacks. But I think Anna can speak to the funding piece.
Geez. So for the Arctic Wolf invoicing has been on a March-to-March basis, which Bobby and I researched. And so when we just paid the invoice this year, we're actually paid up until March of 2025. So Bobby, we worked together and Bobby negotiated a three-month invoice for next year just to get us to the end. So then we will start on a July invoicing and so it's money that we're already paying this year plus the $23,000 and then for FY '26, it'll be the full amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Not being a member of the committee through you to Bobby, hi. Arctic Wolf is very persistent, so I guess that's a good thing. I have a couple of things. One, a follow-up to something Counselor Marsillo said about the ease of use for, you know, someone who's not familiar with the city, ironically what you and I were talking about.
Yes.
Where, you know, without getting into the detail, that the only way someone could find something is if I email them the link. So hopefully that will improve those kind of things. And I just have one other thing because I really appreciate all the stuff you do. I'm, I'm technically inept, so anyone in IT has been a benefit to me. I always cringe when I hear outsourcing. So for the IT functions that are going to the Police Department, is that because we just don't have the staff to facilitate it?
Well, the, we met with the administrators at the Police Department, I think it was about four months ago now, and they really stress the need for full-time IT support during our working hours. And with the IT staff we have now, it, it is difficult to have onsite support for the, the whole time as we're servicing, I think it's about 28 other buildings. And, but they're not wrong. There's, you know, this, it's public safety and when something goes down, when something goes wrong, they need help right away. They do use our Help Ticketing System, which we really appreciate, but a lot of the tech needs they have, they need somebody there right away to resolve the problem. So we did a little research and found a company, it's called Delphi Technologies, they're based out of Lawrence, and their specialty is tech support for police departments. And they work in some other communities in the area. We got some really good references. And so to answer your question, that's where we thought we could meet the needs of both the Police Department, having somebody there that specializes in their, their technology and thus freeing up the technicians that we have stationed there quite a bit to work in other, other buildings.
Although I appreciate that, I hope someday we'll think about the ability for the city, a city employee to fulfill that job. But I do appreciate where you're at now. I'm just thinking what the ideal would be.
Right. So Counselor Cohen, they're, they're not there full-time. Currently, we're on a two-month trial and it's two four-hour shifts a week. So they're in the morning, 8:00 to 12, 8:00 to 12. And then if, if we feel like they, they're working out, they're doing a good job, they're meeting the needs that, you know, the expectations that we have, they'll take on some more hours, but also offer support after hours and weekends and things, they'll provide on-call support.
Thank you, Counselor Cohen. Does anyone else have any questions? Counselor Prozinski?
Thank you. Thank you, Bobby, for what you're doing. You're doing a lot with, doing a lot with very little, so we appreciate all the work that you're putting into this. I did mention earlier that there were four positions open, the Director, the GIC position, the Salem Police Department Support, and what was the fourth position?
The fourth is another Network Administrator. So in, in the budget, we have two Network Administrator positions and a Network Manager. John, who's here today, was a Network Administrator. The position that was vacated was the Network Manager. John moved into that position and now we have a Network Administrator position open.
Welcome aboard, John. Thank you. Backing up to what Counselor Cohen was asking, Police Department, I've got a history with the Police Department for many years and I understand pretty well about the needs of a dedicated IT person in the Police Department. First of all, there's no other, there's no other department in the city that has such sensitive information in the computer system as the Police Department. And when you have a, when you have a revolving door of people going in and out and being able to. able to access the computer systems, including notes and investigations and the names and addresses of sexual assault victims and just a plethora of other very, very highly sensitive things, I think it's very, very important that whoever is in the Police Department stays with the Police Department. I mean, when we first, years ago, when we first started getting the, the computer system going, we were very thorough. The background investigation is with IT people that worked in the station was as extensive as someone who was a new hiree for the Police Department. We had to make sure that that person wasn't accessing records and being able to disseminate them. Now that people are coming and going and coming and going, it makes it more challenging to be able to do that. So I see the importance of that, and I applaud you for addressing that. The security for the, for the website, Arctic Wolf, you hear a lot of the news about cities and towns being attacked by ransomware and things like this. I'm assuming that that's part of the contract with Arctic Wolf is that they monitor, ability to do that, and they have a good record of, of being able to catch, I'd like the citizens of Salem to think that, that we're safe and that we're not going to get, we're not going to get hit like some other cities and towns, municipalities.
Yes, that, that's correct. They do monitor our network. They send alerts to us. They also provide other, if there are, you know, some attacks or some, some other systems that have been attacked or have some kind of failure, we're notified about that. So they, they're right on top of everything. We have learned, working with them, that one of the highest ways that these bad attackers, if we want to call them that, infiltrate into, you know, systems, municipalities, are through our email system, and it's through somebody clicking on a link that they shouldn't. So that's why we're really diligent and pushing these trainings, and that's part of our Arctic Wolf as well, is the employee awareness.
Thank you. And lastly, I want to thank you for revamping the city's website. It is challenging to try to direct people on how to find certain things, and I tell them I'll call them back later after I find it, which may take me days sometimes, but it's, you're right, the search part of it is probably the most difficult to, to try to pinpoint when you're looking for a certain item or certain department. Thank you for doing that. That's, that makes me feel better. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. And thank you, Bobby, for the presentation and the info. All good stuff. I also would like to say thank you for the SharePoint migration last year. I thank God of all counselors, I appreciate that the most. My questions are actually very much in line with Counselor Murcilla's about the website and usage, and very much so, I had a question about the chatbot for the 7,000. I find that when we do look at how many users are actually using it, surprisingly, the number can often be surprising. I had a question with the stat that you had, though, about website subscribers. Are those for our code red subscribers or just the calendar?
So I believe those subscribers are to the site, so any, each site, when you click on those left-hand side, they bring you to some other links that are part of that department page, and you can subscribe to that page if there are any changes or notifications on that page. Those are the subscribers. I actually have like this long spreadsheet that shows like what people are subscribing to.
Do you know where in the budget the code red, Mary, you might be able to know this, where the code red software charges? I'm assuming that's annual maintenance fee also? Is that in your department or is that elsewhere?
I think it's in the Police Department.
Police, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Murcilla?
Thank you, Chair. I just have one, one more question on your, your job description, personnel summary. There's a technical support analyst that's a .03. What is that?
So we, last year, we partnered with Mass Hire North Shore Web, and we provide a lot of different IT services to, to them. Network support, we, we help to install some switches. We, they use our Help Desk Ticketing System. They also call our Help Desk Support Line, and they use our remote software, Log Me In. And we also have technicians that go on a regular basis and, you know, a few hours at a time are over there and helping the IT person they have there. So it's, in turn, they pay a salary of one of our technicians. So it's like their buy-in to all the technology services from our department. So most of that salary that you see, the .2, is paid by Mass Hire North Shore Web. We did during this past year bump that salary up a little bit, and that's where the .2 came in.
Thank you. For clarity, I'd like to mention that some of the departments that will be in front of us for the budget hearings have capital projects that we'll be hearing about, and we vote on them at the, at a later meeting, but they are discussed as we get each, each department in, in front of us. And for anyone wanting to take a look at that, it's tab seven on page, beginning 261 has CIP by department. I just wanted to throw that out there if anyone's interested. And yeah, tonight we have IT and the library that, that have that. Does anybody have any more questions? Yes?
I just, it's big tab number seven in the book instead of little tab number seven.
Yes, towards the front. It seemed I got a color. See what we got here? Light green. Yeah. Just in case anybody's looking for that. Okay, so I don't see any more questions. We have two, two items that we're voting for, for the IT Department, General Administration Budget on page 390, and then fixed costs on, fixed costs on 393. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the IT General Administration Personnel Budget of $801,720, and the IT General Administration Expenditure Budget of $12,500, for a total department budget of $814,220.
Thank you. Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget for $801,720 expenditures for $12,500, for a department total of $814,220, seconded by?
Seconded.
By Counselor Prozahnuski. All in favor? I'd like to note that's three hands plus my own. Counselor Varela is not present, so this motion passes four to zero. Counselor Stott, on page 393?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion for recommend approval for the IT Fixed Costs Expenditures Budget of $960,745.
Thank you. Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the IT Fixed Costs Expenditures in a total of $960,745. Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Prozahnuski. All in favor? So like, let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. Counselor Varela is absent at the moment, so this passes four to zero. And thank you. Appreciate you. And next, in Section 24, we have the Salem Library, which we will hear about from Tara Mansfield. And it is, again, it's Section 24. Yep, 24.
I'm Tara Mansfield from the Salem Public Library. Hopefully everyone knows the library is a small historic building just down the street on Essex Street. Our library is open seven days a week. We offer books, media, digital resources, public computers, printing services, Wi-Fi, programs for all ages, technology assistance, research, outreach, and most, probably most importantly, oh, sorry, sorry, library voice. And probably most importantly, we are a welcoming space where people are just welcome to stay and be and not spend money. So FY '24 was our exciting year for us. This is our first year not relying on overdue fines for, to support our budget. So I do want to thank the Mayor's Office and City Council again for making that dream come true. This year, we continue to work on expanding access to library services. We now offer online e-card registration, so we can verify your address through the automated system, so you don't even have to visit the library if you don't want to. And that, again, gives full access to our digital resources. We've increased the number of community outreach visits, and now we offer even more evening and weekend programs. And this year, we're pleased to say that the library's usage has steadily grown, and we continue to try to evolve to meet the needs of our community. Our goals for next year always center around our core goals, which is supporting our community and making the library accessible for everyone. Should I jump into the numbers?
Yes, and also, if you have any capital projects you'd like to reference as well.
Okay. So starting out with the personnel, again, we're open seven days a week, so we do have a large staff. We are asking for contracted increases for our SLSA library union staff as well as our AFSMI staff, in addition to increases for our non-union staff. We have asked for an increase in our Sunday line this year because the December holidays fall away from the weekend. We will be open two more weekends than we have in the past few years, which is an increase in, in staff cost. And then moving on to the operational budget, we have asked for a 10% increase for electricity and fuel. Again, we'll be open more, and those, those costs continue to rise. One of our most significant increases, unfortunately, is for our theft deterrence system. Unfortunately, the library does experience theft and vandalism. The company that we contract with, we had only been paying the software fee, and now we are required to pay for a maintenance agreement to continue access to that software. So that was kind of an unexpected large jump for us. And just moving forward, we were able to reduce our telephone costs just a little And we are asking for a small increase in, for books and materials as those costs rise. And I think, I think that's it. For the capital request, we are continuing our work to make our building ADA compliance. That's a big ask. Our building was renovated in the late 80s, so there is not much compliance throughout the building. So each year, we, we try to tackle the smaller things. So we're, we're pleased to ask for more funding for the work. And we're also looking to be more efficient, so we're asking for some money for lighting systems, improvement and controls. So if you've been to the library stacks, you've probably noticed that each aisle has its own light switch. So if we could get that on some sort of automated schedule, that would be probably a significant savings.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? Yes, Counselor Murcilla?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tara. Can you talk a little bit about what has happened since the fines were dropped? Are you seeing any trends? Has it affected the library at all?
I have to say, people are delighted. Not just the patrons, but our staff. Those constant unpleasant interactions, I think, really overshadowed what we, we try to do and the services we provide. So I, I have to say personally, it's been a world of difference, and people feel more welcome. They're not afraid to return an overdue book anymore. Plus, we have our, our new outdoor book drop, so they can anonymously return an overdue book, and we'll never know.
Have you seen people come back that hadn't been there in years and years because they had outstanding fines?
Yes, definitely. And it's, it's been really fun to see people whose cards have expired, and they're just coming back saying, well, I know I owed, you know, like $35. And we say, oh, no, it's all cleared and there's no fine.
It's awesome. That's great. Thank you. And can you talk about where the pop-up library, your mobile library, goes these days?
Absolutely. So right now, we're on an every-other-Friday rotation at the Community Life Center. We go to 27 Charter Street once a month. In addition, we're visiting the schools for all the curriculum nights, the open houses. We'll be at the senior celebration, we'll be at the pride parade, the eager election. We, we go to so many community events throughout the year, so if you'd like to invite us, we're always excited to come.
No, my question is more, do, in the summer especially, is there, are there any plans to get to, like, Pequot Highlands and, you know, maybe Salem Heights, places that are further? Salem Heights isn't as bad, but like, Pequot Highlands is way out on Highland Avenue, not as easily accessible for kids, for instance. The other one in Ward 7 that I can't remember the name of because it's not in my ward, but Loring Towers, thank you, Loring Towers. But are there any plans to go there in the summer?
I know, but we, we would, we'd be happy to. We can definitely do it.
I would love to try it to see, you know, if you can, yeah, I would, I think that would be really helpful.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. For the ADA upgrades, I think I also really appreciate the new book. No, my kid really appreciates the new book drop, and I make her get out to drop off books, so thank you for that. But do you know what is on the list for this year for the capital improvement funds? Or is it just kind of a general, you're going to figure out what project is at the top of the queue? Or do you have something in mind?
One of the things I would like to prioritize is in the bathrooms, everything is at the wrong height. The tricky part is finding a contractor that's willing to do all, because these are kind of smaller jobs, so that's been an ongoing issue. We're finding almost in every area behind that drywall, there is nothing. So when we open up the wall to try to rebuild something, they're having to build inside the drywall, and then, so the costs tended to go up. But that, that would be, we would love to have the bathrooms be fully accessible. That's my goal.
Thank you, Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee, through you to, I'm not sure, to you, Tara, or to the mayor. I'm looking at the expenditures, and you have oil and gas heating. Does that mean you have separate oil and gas boilers or furnaces, do you know?
Yes, we have a oil furnace, and then we also have, have gas.
So I'm going to recommend more to the mayor that this gets next on the list for heat pumps, because you have a lot of people of all ages and, and everything that could be. use good quality air and actually save money in the long term on the energy costs. So I'm hoping that, is that something that you have on the schedule, Mayor?
We're going to double-check, but I'm pretty sure this was one of the facilities that was part of the AMRS go audit.
Oh, it is?
So, but we'll check.
Okay, so those controls would make a big difference, but at some point, when they mature out, I hope they'll be on the list.
Yeah, and the, the lighting controls that are on the list for this year, the way, there was an approach to find the investments that had rebates that may be expiring and prioritizing those. And, and so that's why I think the lighting was elevated here, was because we wanted to make sure that we could do it in the most cost-effective way, since those rebates were expiring. But there's certainly other things in the library that are on that list.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the budget personnel, I'm sorry, for the library personnel budget of $1,258,199,000, and for the library expenditure budget of $407,541, for a total departmental budget of $1,665,740.
Thank you. Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the library personnel budget for $1,258,199,000. The library expenditures for $407,541, for a library department total of $1,665,740.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pozniewski. All in favor? I'd like to let the record show, I see three hands plus my own. Counselor Reller is absent. So that is approved, four to zero. And thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in. So I just want to check with the Finance Director. I believe we did everything except the mayor. Is there anything I missed? Just double-checking. Okay, great. Thank you. So next, we have, let me just get the, that was at the top. So this is in Section 1. The budget summary is on page 299. And yes, thank you, Mayor Pengalo.
Thanks so much. Lisa was pointing out to me that it's a year, almost exactly. She said, like, the first thing I did after the election was come in before you to talk about the budget. And it's great to be back with you. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the work that's been going on in our office, some of the changes in the numbers, and then happy to take questions about this or more generally, budget questions you might have, things we can follow up on. So I want to recognize that, from my office, Lisa Peterson, Chief of Staff is here, as is Michael Corley. Not required to be here, just to say, just show up as a concerned citizen, which is great. And so I'll, I'll talk about some of the work that's been happening throughout our office. Lisa, Michael, Sabrina, Julio, Lori, Ginny, Sarah, and Jeremy. It's a great group. Lori Stewart is the Housing Stability Coordinator. She's been working, really a critical part of our team, since I would say that housing requests for help are the number-one requests that we get in the office. And you'll see in the performance measures, we're tracking those separate from general constituent inquiries, and there are over 1,000 from this past year, providing counseling to some really complicated cases and helping people try to figure out a path forward. Lori's also been working on public information efforts, implementation of public policy, and engaging in community-facing work. And I want to give her and everybody who's working on the, the task force over at South Campus, working with the homeless families. There are a lot of credit on the efforts that they've been doing to try to provide housing placement for the families that are there. As you may recall, earlier in this fiscal year, that position was partially moved into the regular budget. It was initially 100% funded by ARPA. Now it's split between ARPA and city budget, and our proposal is for the rest of this year to continue that split and to wind it down into the regular budget for FY26, which will be the last year that it could receive any ARPA funding. There is a number of new initiatives that we undertook over the past year around providing greater access to city services. And I want to give a lot of credit to, to Michael and to Julio and to Lisa and Sabrina around the Mobile Mayor's Office. So we're taking the Mayor's Office staff and relocating to a different location in the community for a day. We also have what are called Wednesday walks. Julio and Michael are going out to different commercial areas and neighborhoods and walking the areas to check in with business owners, look at the condition of public infrastructure, talk to residents about concerns they may be having. And if you're not signed up for it, the Salem Compass is our bi-weekly newsletter that Sabrina pulls together from our office. We do have some new positions in the budget, which you'll see in the department, and that's largely the reason for the budget increase in the personnel side. The Special Events Coordinator, which had previously been in the Engineering Department, has been moved over to the Mayor's Office. Jeremy Fisk is in that role now. In addition to coordinating for 4th of July and Haunted Happenings, Jeremy's also taking out some new initiatives that we've assigned to the role. He's convening a regular meeting of all the different organizations that hold festivals and special events, just to provide some collaboration and communication amongst stakeholders. And he's also working on, if you may or may not know, Salem Main Street's had an audit done about how to conduct a special event in Salem and changes necessary for internal processes or for ordinances. So he's taking that audit, which is now about a year or two old, and putting together a plan for implementation on how to make some improvements there. Sarah Roy, if you've had an opportunity to meet her, is the Director of the Salem Children's Alliance, which is also based in the Mayor's Office. That position is 100% funded by a grant from the state called CPPI. Sarah's work is really focused on youth and children. She has been working on reestablishing the Children's Cabinet. So this is a meeting of agencies and organizations throughout the city that help support children and the youth in the community, again, to provide that coordination and collaboration. She's developing a, a single-point-of-entry platform for, for new parents and families to navigate choices around childcare and around early education in Salem. And she's also working on restarting the Youth Council, which is a body that exists in the Code of Ordinances, but we've not had for a number of years now, especially after COVID. So that will be coming, hopefully, those appointments will be coming before you in the, in the coming year. Ginny Cherrill is the Salem 400-plus Coordinator. That position was part-time up until this year. It's now become full-time. As we get closer to 2026 and all the work that she's been undertaking with the stakeholders and the working group, development of the website, and the programs and events that are planned for 2026 and our 400th birthday. And lastly, I want to give a big shout-out to my Chief of Staff, Lisa Peterson. I thought you were going to be in your meeting during this, so I didn't remember. No, and just say, you know, a lot of the work that Lisa's taken on in the last year has been focused on building, improving morale in the workplace and making people feel like they're part of a, of a, something bigger than themselves when they're working for the city of Salem. So you mentioned wages, and I think we have a lot of work to do on wages, but having a healthy and supportive and positive workplace is about not just how much somebody's getting paid. We want them to feel like they're supported here. So reestablishing our all-staff meetings, publishing the, the monthly employee newsletter, which Michael is responsible for pulling together so skillfully every month, setting up our employee resource groups, even arranging for after-hours work outings for employees to be able to socialize and get to know one another. A lot of that all kind of flows out of our office, and I'm very happy with the work that's being done, and a lot of credit to Lisa for leading that. I won't touch on all of the things that are listed under the accomplishments here. I will talk about just a couple of quick things. I think our past October season went very smoothly, with a few exceptions. We've talked a lot about October, so we won't get into it now, but I did listen to their accomplishments. There's a lot to learn from what happened and places for improvement. But on balance, I think we were pretty happy with it. The work around the offshore wind port has been a huge part of our work for the last year. I'm proud of the Community Benefits Agreement, the TIF Agreement, the Warfing Agreement, and the fact that we've navigated the permitting process on the local level, and we're still moving forward. Looking forward to appointing the CBA Committee, but really hoping that that's, you know, an ongoing process where the community is going to continue to be involved, as that's, I'm sure the neighborhood will be, but I think the larger community also, as the construction happens and the development gets underway. The Wage Theft Ordinance that was mentioned, inclusionary zoning, I think a lot of credit to the council for your work on a lot of these efforts in partnership, I feel like, with the administration, but really, a lot of council-led actions that I'm grateful for, trying to make Salem a more affordable place for everybody. The South Salem commuter rail stop, you know, we are pushing forward on the design funding, trying to secure that. We've established a working group that's been meeting, looking forward to a public meeting that's going to be coming up shortly around that. A lot of work around completing and then eventually implementing our equity audit. I want to give credit to Rahina Zerikosa Frey, our DI Director in the Legal Department, for the work she's been doing there. But also, you know, point out, this was in the HR budget, so we didn't really talk about it there, but we talked about this during the retreat, that we did create a new program for providing stipends to bilingual employees who pass certification if they're engaging in, asked to engage in translation or interpretation at the city's benefit, and it's not part of their job description. We really especially feel like they need to be compensated for that. So the model for that program is based on what the Salem Public Schools do, and we're just applying it to the employees that are also on the city side of our budget. There is a language access policy that we've developed that, again, is reflective of the schools, and we're going to be working to start implementing that in the coming fiscal year, pushing our departments to make sure that every public-facing document, particularly those that are required to access city services, are available in English and in Spanish. We've set up some internal working groups. For those of you who may remember, the Problem Properties Task Force, it's an interdepartmental group that meets monthly to talk about nuisance properties, very effective. It's created ordinance changes, it's pursued grant funding, it's developed receivership applications. So we're taking that model and applying it to other cross-jurisdictional problems that involve multiple departments. We have a Social Services Working Group that's now starting up, that's helping identify resources and supports for people. So taking that model with buildings and just applying it to people. We have a Federal Funds Working Group. We have a Coastal Resilience Working Group. These are all groups that involve multiple departments, meeting on a periodic basis to share notes and just break down silos. And I know we're going to talk about the schools at the school budget hearing, but I just want to point out, you know, the high school building project is, you know, really proud of how we've advanced that over this past year. The OPMs selected, we're excited to make some announcements soon, move forward on the design phase. There are a number of community, public forums happening right now to gauge feedback from the public about grade configurations, assignment policy, kind of revisiting the facility master plan that we did two years ago. So I encourage everyone to attend either the one on Zoom or the one in person at the Saul and Stowe School in a few weeks. The Building Committee, so phenomenal group of people. A couple of weeks ago, I appointed three students to the committee, not required to under the law, but we wanted to get some student voice on there. So there's three Salem High School students now serving on that committee. So that's a lot. I will, I'm happy to walk through any of the numbers that you would like to review or ask any questions about anything that's in here. But I just want to say again how grateful I am to have the opportunity to be here and how appreciative I am of the staff in my office. And Michael has a big day next Friday, walking to get his masters. Yeah, so there's, there's a lot in here. I'm happy to talk through the performance measures or money, so.
Thank you, Mayor Pengalo. I also have great appreciation for your staff. They make my job when I do constituent services a lot easier. Yes, one question and one just a comment. I did, I had seen in here that, that you had talked about the importance of the Neighborhood Stability Coordinator position, which, yes, in total agreement, and I knew that half of that was ARPA funds. So I was happy to hear you comment that will be part of the, that'll be worked in as part of the regular budget for 2026, so the position will continue. So that's, that's good news. And also, on Sarah, the Director of the Children's Alliance, and that is grant-funded here 100%, is there plans to keep, to keep that position? I mean, is that grant multi-year? I was curious about that.
So that, that grant is over multiple years. So for the duration of that grant, and then longer-term after the grant, that's still to be determined.
Okay, glad to hear that's multiple years. Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? Counselor Masillo.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions. The data is really good, like, the response rates and things are really good. And this is more of a general question for all customer-facing employees in the city. Is there any, any thought to doing like a customer satisfaction survey on their way out of City Hall or something, just some quick thing that they could put in, you know? Because I would love to get some indication of how the public is finding the help here.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I mean, either a survey as people leave, I mean, they have things where it's like, just tap the smiley face or the frowny face for customer feedback, or even online, because a lot of people access our services online or they call, they never actually physically come in. But I would love to do that. We are talking about doing an employee survey as part of our kind of ongoing efforts to think about our, our self as an employer and the workplace, but having a feedback directly from people that are using services, yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah, I mean, I think that some, some people may not even realize that their job is customer service. As far as the public is concerned, it's customer service, and yeah.
Absolutely. And I'll just add to that. So my, our insurance company provides a training, a customer service training that we've used periodically in the past. I don't think we've actually used it since my election. So, you know, the last time was when Mayor Driscoll was in office, but I think it's something that's worth, we've had enough turnover in our frontline staff, it'd be worth bringing them back in to do that.
Okay. It's interesting that you joined the National Mayor's Institute on Pedestrian Safety. I would love to, at some point, hear what they're talking about and how it could help Salem.
Yeah, so this, the groups only had one meeting so far, and it was to basically introduce ourselves and talk about our communities and the challenges that we have. So it's, it's a series, this is through the Mayor's Innovation Project, and it's going to be a series of, it's a cohort of 10 or 11 mayors who be applied, and then they selected us, and we participate in a number of meetings on Zoom with one another, with experts. We heard from someone from Smart Growth Americas, the Transportation Director at the last meeting, just talking about best practices around achieving Vision Zero. So happy to share notes from it. I think as, as it moves forward, like I said, we've only had one meeting so far, so.
Okay. And then finally, the item Continued Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program Pilots and Permanent Installations. I have mentioned this to you before, probably a year ago. I really think we need a commitment from the city with a timeline of how we get from posts and paint to a permanent installation and a, and a commitment to the neighborhoods involved, that this is going to become something that's not just really ugly flex posts. If it's working, it's working. And I know that it's a lot of money, but we're doing this, and we need to make these streets safer. And we need also to commit to the neighborhood that they're not going to be looking at these really awful installations for 10 years.
There's a question, but yeah, noted, I hear. I think we can talk about it more when we have the transportation budget. I think you, you named it well, that one of the challenges is that the, the cost and complication of making some projects permanent versus others is, it varies. So it's, I, I think it would be hard to look somebody in the eye and say, this project's going to be made permanent in three years. That project's going to be made permanent in three years if it's far more complicated and more expensive, and we would have to rely on, in some cases, competing for state or federal grants, like a complete streets grant, or say, for a school or Mastock grant, that I couldn't guarantee you we would receive. We could say we're going to strive for that, but it's a fair point. We can talk about it for sure.
Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you. I guess first, I have to ask about these Instagram followers here. We've got a 100% increase in estimated Instagram followers. Just curious if you have something in the pipeline for dances or reels or something going on there?
Yeah, our content is super viral. I don't, you speak to why it went up by so much.
It's actually not important. It's okay. I did want to compliment you on the, the Wednesday walks, Michael. I think it's Michael and Julio that have been doing those, right? Heard from a number of business owners that they appreciate seeing those. Sometimes people feel, feel forgotten about downtown because it's so busy and it's so vibrant and, but there's a lot of feedback that comes from those business owners. So I hope you keep doing that, and then, you know, expand. I think it actually shows like residents frequently ask where tax dollars have gone. I think this is a great, at least for me visually, a visual way to see where those tax dollars go and what that looks like.
Yeah, I'll plug it for the people at home, Counselor, that the Budget in Brief is also at salemma.gov/fy25, and it's a short, heavy graphic, easy-to-read summary of the budget.
Yes, agreed. The Budget in Brief is really helpful, and I knew Counselor Hopworth was a fan of the dollar bill. But it is, it's super helpful, because you had told me about that, and then I saw it in the Budget in Brief, and I was like, there it is, and it is helpful. Thank you. Any, yes?
Yes. I know it was half in jest, but I wanted to speak to the social media followers. The way that this was calculated was actually based on, we did have a big increase already this last year, and I'm not sure why, but we did. And so, it's, those estimates are based on just calculating off the jump that we did have over the last year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, through you. One comment, I also appreciate the visual for the budget. I still, every year, ask for that software that we used once, the Visualized Budget, where you could actually click on that portion of the dollar and then it would go into the details. I love, like totally geeked out over that.
It's really expensive. It was cool.
It made the budget so transparent for the public, though, in like a really easily digestible manner, but.
We can look into it for a few years. I agree. Incredible. It's got to be cheaper if I came down in price.
Yeah. My one comment and question, a lot have already been touched upon, but I'm curious about the Special Events Management. I see there's a comment about develop a walking tour and performance zone regulations. Are those something that will be presented to council soon?
That's the Public Guide Ordinance that was filed.
Okay, so there's not the separate performance zone regulations?
Oh, the performance zone one, that's still in study, yeah.
Okay. That's all.
Counselor Proznowski?
Mayor, I just want to thank you for your, the way that you've been more transparent than other administrations. You've been surprisingly more accessible and, at least with your constituents and with the council. I know it's the budget talks and you've done, and this outlines exactly where the future, where your idea of the future of Salem is going, and you've done a good job of providing very, very good sheets on exactly what, I had a lot of questions if I was able to, just by see by what you put here, which was, which was very good, but it's just, it's refreshing, given me some changes that are working very well. I think the community appreciates your honesty, your transparency, and your accessibility. So, thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm going to follow up on Counselor Proznowski. Thank you, Counselor Merkel, through you to the mayor. Really, a very positive thing that I've seen personally is the way we've teamed up, you know, when an ordinance gets in front of the council, the way we've teamed up, you know, like wage stuff to the camping ordinance, and the amount of collaboration between whatever counselors are working on that project and you and your staff. You know, we had a lot of working group meetings on the wage stuff, and I think that was really valuable, so I just wanted to express my appreciation for that.
Any more questions from the council? Okay, I also want to agree with my fellow counselors and mention all the departments that came in front of us tonight, how hard they all work. Almost all of them talked about, you know, having staff openings, so the staff that is in place, who is working tremendously hard, and what you've done to prepare everything to head us into the budget hearings, and the staff, and it's really appreciated. And Mayor Pangalo, you had your hand?
Sorry, I just, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Anna and the Finance Department staff, all of them, for their work on this year's budget. I know I mentioned it the other Thursday night when this was filed, but this is, it's both a challenging financial situation right now throughout the Commonwealth for cities and towns, and we are contending with that, the uncertainty of collective bargaining with five of our eight public employee unions, rising costs, you know, fixed costs that we're, that we're trying to manage against. And on top of that, a request that, we filed this earlier in the month of May so that there's more time for the council to look at it, was really, I think, a challenging time, a challenging request to the department, but they managed. So, I just want to express my gratitude to Anna, to the whole Finance Department team. You guys, I just did, have done great work, so going to be prouder.
As I wholeheartedly agree, and Anna has given me a tremendous amount of time to train and prepare me for this and walk me through everything in our meetings, so that is appreciated as well. Okay, and the budget summary for the Mayor's Department is page 299. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the mayor's personnel budget of $573,578 and the mayor's expenditure budget of $130,284 for a total of $703,862.
Thank you. Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the mayor's personnel budget for $573,578. The mayor's expenditures for $130,284 for a department total of $703,862.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Proznowski. All in favor? Okay, I see three hands on plus my own, so this passes four to zero. Okay. Any final questions? Nope. Okay, I'll entertain one last motion. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you for your hands. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.